You're still two minutes.
What?
You're still two minutes.
Oh.
Are you done with, uh, no soccer's not done yet, is it?
No, I think Emma has a few more games and then Landen's doing football as well, so I think there's a few more games. But we still have travel softball and baseball in the weekends for everything else, because they get... But Emma gets her permit hopefully next week, so we're getting towards that.
Oh, you think you look forward to that.
Hey, can they still drive someone in the family in the car with them?
Yeah, so like Emma could drive with me and Landon. Oh, you mean when she gets her license? When she gets her license?
No, it used to be with the permit, they could like...
I think you kind of...
No, and they have to be over twenty, like you have to have somebody over twenty-one in the seat next to you that has a license.
That wasn't the way it was when we were growing up.
You could drive on a permit without like an older person in the vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
That's great.
Alright.
Oh yeah.
That's right for you too.
For a permit, yeah.
Yeah, so this...
I mean, even when my kids weren't in high school, they're thirty and twenty-eight.
I'm thirty-eight, I had to have somebody over like twenty-one
Yeah, same.
in the car with me that had a license for like over so many years or something.
So over twenty-one to go somewhere, everybody bring their own car, there'd be like twelve cars.
What's going on? Yeah, you know.
Okay. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Okay, uh, well, welcome to the regular meeting of the Bethel Planning Board. Today is Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-four. This meeting is scheduled for six to eight P. M. We would need a majority vote of the planning board to go beyond eight o'clock. With that in mind, we have two items on the agenda tonight to consider. One subdivision amendment under new business and one communication regarding forty-four Mayville Road. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind everyone that all questions need to go through the chair. So I'd like to declare a quorum.
Wow.
Full house.
Good full house tonight. Have you all had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the last meeting on September eleventh?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last... Oh, I guess you should ask if there's any changes, I'm jumping ahead, sorry.
No, that's, no.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Any, any questions or amendments? All in favor? Communication. So... Danny, you gonna do this? So look, this is a bit unusual, but I actually like it. Danny's representing, uh, Aroma Joe's and he has some questions for our board. And we can't really ask Danny a lot of questions about the project, because he doesn't have an application in yet. He's here to ask us, I think it's mostly, is it mostly architectural review?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, for, for guidance from us to expedite the process when he does come with a full application, so go ahead.
So, alright, so thank you for, for taking the time. Um, so I'm actually here representing Michael Pelletier and Mark Pollan, who are, who will be the ones submitting the application when the time comes. And neither of them could be here tonight, but I work for Mike, and so I'm pretty involved in this project. And we're actually working with Rick on this project as well, so he's kind of on double duty tonight.
Good to know.
But yeah, at, at, at kind of Rick's advice and, and Aroma Joe's advice, um, and based on what we've read in the architectural standards for the town of Bethel, we thought it prudent to seek some, um, guidance or suggestions from you folks up front on, um, the building itself mostly and the architectural standards surrounding that. We know there's been some pushback in the past on some similar projects, so we just wanted to get out in front of it and see what we had to do to the, to the design of the building, um, if anything, to, to, to make, um, everybody happy, so.
Okay.
Do you need any more questions than that, or?
Do you have an elevation to that you can...
Sure, that might be a good idea.
Oh, you're talking about... Emma, did you distribute that, those elevations to everybody?
Just packing?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
We're gonna look at, open our books.
Right, there's nothing actionable here tonight. Nothing actionable.
I use all your old tabs.
No, none of the books have tabs.
Oh, mine do.
I cut Sherry's tab. Yes, yours are there, you're supposed to do it.
Emma, do you know where the special containers are?
I've got mine on. One forty dash one says commercial establishment.
Yeah, they had this and I did send out a draft of...
Well, it's one forty dash seven is the chapter, and then at the bottom it's one forty dash one.
They don't have the...
That shows the commercial establishment, is that where you're looking for?
We have new books. So bear with us.
That sounds like fun.
You know it.
One forty down one is it? Um, I don't know if that really...
No, it's the ones that are, um, say we can't approve the pitch roof.
Sun one forty colon sixteen.
One forty sixteen? I think it's a ten.
Well, that's where commercial standards are.
I'm getting there, hold on. Uh, the pitch roof is one forty, um, seventy four, two nine.
Two nine, oh my gosh, that's way better.
Yeah, I know it got reorganized a little.
I think it's... Oh, I got it, one forty seven, uh, colon thirty, colon thirty. It starts on twenty-nine though, you're right. It starts on twenty-nine, goes on to the next page.
Oh, the relationship.
Oh, yeah, relationship to the, okay. Relationship of the proposed buildings to the environment, proposed structures shall be related harmoniously to the terrain and to existing buildings in the vicinity which have a visual relationship to the proposed buildings. Special attention shall we pay to the bulk, location and height of the buildings. Such natural features are slope sole type and drainage ways. I know, it's very, um, ambiguous, isn't it? So, building facade color shall be compatible with other building, this is on the next page. In the vicinity, standard corporate and trademark color shall be permitted only in signage. And I'll go on, exterior building materials shall be of comparable aesthetic quality on all sides of the building. So I think we're up to speed.
Yeah, so if, if you look at the, um, the documents that I think Emma sent out to everybody, there's a couple of elevations on the prototype packet that you'll see that show sort of the design of the building. And then there's also a hard copy picture, um, that shows the colors associated with it. And that first page with that elevation is a good one to look at, and then page, uh, which is actually page six, and then page...
Yeah, because you have, you have a pitch and then a flat roof.
Page eleven depicts the entire building as well.
Is there any eligible copies? Whether or not... Oh, I can't, I can't.
Yeah, but we only really need to...
No, we need to look at, he's asking us to focus on this, so it's a modified pitch, it's got a flat roof.
It's on page eleven and I'm trying to look at numbers.
Page six.
Oh, it's on page six and I can't read any, and I'm sorry, it's so blurry.
Just looking at the design.
Just of the design anyway, we don't need to know other particulars. Very good.
Chair, I'm sorry, all my sins to the chair. Why are, what is the, what is the question on the table now? I mean, what, why are we looking at all this?
Go ahead, Danny.
Essentially to get some feedback on whether or not this would, this, this building design and color scheme would be approved.
Then Aroma Joe's is Aroma Joe's, I mean, they're always the same, right? I mean, they're pretty much a standard prototype, no?
They have a lot, yeah, there, there's very similar ones, but they have a lot of different models and stuff and...
That depends on our code too.
Too, yeah.
Right.
Alright, so that's the question.
Well, and I just wanna comment too, like it wouldn't be approved because it's communications, so it's a completely like non-decision making conversation of the standard really doesn't have any like, these are the colors we accept, this is the pitch we accept, so it's more of a, hey, what are you guys looking for?
Right, right, yeah. I actually like this process, we're not accustomed to it, so.
If I may, Chair, uh, speak for myself. I would not be comfortable with this, uh, modified roof standard where it's flat, but you've created a kind of pitch out front. I think it should be a pitched roof. We've had some problems with the choice of materials in a couple of locations about, they're trying to add an aesthetic of stone, but it's really not stone, it's something very fake-like, plasticky. I would say please stay away from that, and you'll see structures on the street that have true stone facades, so, do you know what I mean? But I don't wanna be talking about other properties, but there is one that tried to mimic a stone that looks totally plastic. We don't wanna encourage that, because these were written post that development, at least in my mind. And I would say that, um, you know, uh, you're next to buildings that are of some tan, gray color base. And I would say that stark white is, you know, should be toned down to something like...
Is that white, Danny?
It is a white, it's a stark white.
I've never seen a white Aroma Joe's, have I?
Yeah, yeah, they're kind of stark white.
The one in Oxford, Oxford or whatever, that, that looks just like this, I thought, I've never seen one that didn't look like this. Did you, oh, sorry.
Yeah, and so I would take your cue from, you have, I know we're not supposed to be asking questions, so I'll say it this way. If the intention is for the small house to remain on the site, and that's gray, you wanna be compatible with that at least. And, um, so the trademark colors, which for you are that blue, are really limited to your signage kind of thing, so. And, yeah, I would do what, um, try to incorporate the blue where it's gonna matter most, in my opinion, associated with the signage, I mean, that's what people will look for. And I don't think it matters what the building is, and we're trying to create a uniform, not uniform, but a, um, we're not looking for cookie cutter, but we're looking for, um, uh, not, uh, you know, trying to create a, um, a quality look in a very prominent entry grade road into our community.
I agree with you about the, the little house, and also...
Across the street in the garage.
That's like gray and white, right? The house, the Irving, that's like...
Irving is not...
It's more, it's more the color of walgreens and...
Yeah, it's more of the brownish-beige color, yeah.
I think it'd probably be more important for you to tie it to the little house, seeing it's on the same property.
Well, there's a house in the garage that's the same color.
The garage thing?
The garage is, it will be, would be moved, yeah. Same as the house, yeah. Yes, yeah, moved on within the property.
It's so hard to not ask questions.
So that, just summarizing, it's the color tone of the main building, it's the roof structure. I would be seeking to see you do a complete pitch, and it's not using imitation fake plasticky looking stone-like aesthetics on the base, even though I think people think they're doing something nice, it, it's not very quality looking.
Yeah, I know sometimes that, I know at Denko Delance, they gave us like three different plans, and, um, so, it's, they've always, they always have, I think, a handful of plans that might be appropriate.
Certainly.
Yep.
And so...
Ain't like the movie theater, call them out.
Or there's that, just mural the whole thing, and we have nothing to say about it. So...
Well, thank you, Laurie, I appreciate that, that feedback.
That's pretty consistent from across the board, yeah.
Yeah. Does everyone feel that way? You don't, you don't feel, you don't agree with what we're saying, Bob?
No.
What do you think?
It, the characteristic of the building, I see no problem with it. A lot of the Aroma Joe's are designed like that. I don't know if they have any problems with the flat roof as far as leaky or anything like that, but so what, so they got...
I don't think it's in our, I think it's in our ordinance.
It is.
We can't have a flat roof.
No, it says may require.
Oh, okay, I mean, because we left it that way, he says...
Oh, alright.
We've had everybody else that wanted flat roofs have pitched them.
But it's not, it's not a requi, it's not a definite requirement.
Right.
It's not a situation where they, where you say they shall, if they may.
Yeah.
So...
You're right.
The colors of the buildings perhaps don't particularly match that area. Their signage though is gonna be the big thing, because it's sitting back so far. That other building's gonna be a problem as far as, I would notice that when they come through there, that that'll, that that is there and how to get into it, just by, um...
Right. Does any, do you have any other questions for us?
Those, those were kind of the two red flags for me, that, you know, we, we wanna make sure that we're not coming in with a fully baked application. And, you know, that in there, if it's gonna be found objectionable, objectionable as far as, I think the roof is probably the bigger one. Because I don't know if they have, they do HVAC on top of the flat portion, and then they hide that behind the, the, the false front with the pitch. Uh, and I don't, I don't know, we'll have to check with Aroma Joe's to see if they have a, a prototype that has full, full pitch and HVAC, you know, ground mounted essentially, because they have a, a really small footprint on purpose, it's, you know, get folks in and around and it fits in tight, tight spots.
Right. So the pitch and the color, the two main things. Oh, what is the height? Oh, we're not supposed to, but I'm assuming...
Yeah, if I told you the height, that might help you, I think.
Yeah.
So...
Oh, it's on thirty-five feet.
We don't wanna go there again, I'm sure it is, it's only one story.
I'm guessing it's going twenty foot, twenty-five foot.
They're not a very large scale structure in any dimension.
It would look like a milk carton if it was thirty-five feet.
I have twenty-one nine. Twenty-one feet, nine inches to the...
Yeah, that'd be good.
Twenty, twenty what?
Twenty-one feet, nine inches to the beat.
I figured it was under, just wanted to make sure.
We can't. We have to wait till the full, um, I really do like, I wish we had an official intake process for a, a large project. I think it would, it's almost nice to roundtable it and, but we don't, but I really appreciate you coming in ahead of time. So you're right, so you have a fully baked application.
Yep, no, and I appreciate you guys reviewing the info and, um, we will be, we will be making application here in the next month or so, so. We just wanted to get ahead of it a little bit, um, and go from there, and if, I did include in the, um, in the packet there, uh, an initial draft of a site plan, so, um, I'd love to have you kind of review that ahead of time too, just so you know what's, what's coming down the road. There will be changes to it, it's not a final copy, um, but the, the gist of it is there.
What is, what is it you particularly are looking for feedback about on a site plan?
On the site plan, not necessarily anything in particular, um, we, you know, we, we plan to have the appropriate permits in place and stuff, so. But, yeah, I think...
For my part, it would be red flags, you know, if you, if you look at the site plan and say, oh, I could, I could never dream of, you know, if, if there's something that jumped out that you're like, why, why did they do that?
I mean, the issues for your site plan, and I don't know if I can respond to this...
You guys can respond to whatever, it was more a, let's just try to stick to the topic, so that we don't go over an application that you don't have.
You don't need to answer these, but the issue for me on the site plan is what is gonna be the location of the other structures that may remain on site? You have residential properties budding up against one of your, um, property lines, you're gonna, that is something that will be looked at. And you will have the entry issue off the road, and you will, uh, which will be subject to MDOT. And you will have the car stacking, because we don't need to tell you what that road looks like in the winter, backed up to the park, backed up all the way down the parkway.
Down to Tellstow.
Down to Tellstow, excuse me, um, so you need to seriously, seriously address all of those issues.
I have a, can you, uh, Rick, do you put these together?
The applications?
Yeah, the packets. Can you do, I don't know if an eleven by seventeen will be adequate, if you can read it.
Oh, no, we do full-size plans when it comes to that.
Oh, thank God. I get my little magnet. Yeah.
See, we have a detail of that side.
I know, yeah, yeah, we'll need, we'll need that for sure.
Take it big enough so we can read it.
Yes.
Yeah. I know it's a lot of money to do these packets, I know you, you're used to doing it, but... When do you think you're gonna be ready for the full?
I, I think a lot of it probably depends on, on feedback we get from Aroma Joe's and a little bit DOT, that's still in the works, so I, I mean, that was, that was, uh, one of our concerns too, we're gonna make sure that DOT is good, um, with it and, and there'll be a traffic movement permit, so that's, you know, that's gotta be in the works at the same time as, as the rest, so.
Yeah.
Month, couple of months, yeah.
Okay.
You're right.
Probably definitely wanna do a site plan, it just might be a little tricky.
Oh, a sidewalk?
A sidewalk, so it just might be a little tricky if we get buried in snow.
Yeah. I'm sure we'll...
Yeah, I agree.
I believe a sidewalk last year was more three feet or so, so it doesn't...
That was the only snowstorm we got.
Thank God we know a guy who knows.
Yeah, it's a pretty small site, so thank you, we're not like trucking over, but not inside, like unblocked summer or something.
I know. Okay, great, I guess if you have any more questions for us?
Yeah.
I hope that was helpful.
I do pay attention to the fact that you're bordering the street of residences.
Yeah, it's good feedback, and that's, that's, you know, that's really, that's, I think the value in this is before we're coming, a lot of times we'll have a process, I'll call it sketch plan review. And that's kind of what we envision, it's not, we don't have a formal application in front of you, but we'd really like to have your opinion.
Yeah.
So that we can, we can start to shape, um, you know, what's the design and, and what the application will be.
I like it, I don't know if everybody else does, but...
And then we're just telling them things that we've worked on before with other projects, you know, residence and flow of traffic and things like that, or things we're always looking at, so.
Yeah, we're not committing to anything, but you're saying, hey, watch, watch out, I'm sure that's gonna be helpful.
Yeah.
Alright, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. So I guess we can move on. Now with all that, this is Floria trying to find, this is in the book, I've lost my agenda.
Somebody hold on to this paperwork that Ryan shared.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think so, you might as well.
Well, I gotta pull out the page.
Yeah, yeah, probably you're right, you don't... Oh, it's right in front of me, okay. So now, under new business, uh, we have Mayville Junction subdivision amendment. So... Did you bring yours in? Hi, Danny.
Thank you again.
Okay, good, well, then why don't we look over my water cup?
How put one has a middle table?
Does anyone need a larger format to look at? I'm gonna open one of our, down here, um, I just got one there, I'll put one here, okay. I found this very interesting, um, Rick, your letter, um... Six, yeah.
I think I know where you're going.
Yeah, it's like, why, why, why did this go through site plan? I have no idea. Why it went through site plan, but I guess it saves the hassle of going through it now, would it?
I'm a little confused.
I mean...
Not, not site plan subdivision, five hundred.
This went through site plan a long time ago.
Well, it was commercial. It did, it did actually. It originally was approved for two buildings on the line, I believe, but it was subdivision and site.
Subdivision and site, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, it's just what... One we're working on? Or have this part, self-storage building, Bethel Beverage, because I got myself, I'm gonna turn it around.
Hey, hey, if you would, take on that map right there and tell us where, um, where the new, uh, Bethel Storage is. You're gonna put me to the test, because I'm not super familiar.
See where the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not driving by them.
Because that's Bethel Beverage, correct?
That's Bethel Beverage, right there.
Using that driveway.
They share an entrance.
The other, the lot that we're looking at is between Bethel Beverage and that ski shop.
Portona.
Okay, yes, it's a very small piece of property.
So you want to divide this? I guess we can let Rick do this.
So this is that little storage facility stuck in here.
Lot, lot two is the storage.
No, lot seventy, I think is stored in it.
No, lot two is the storage, lot, on lot one, the existing building is Bethel Beverage.
No.
No, that can't be right, that's what I got myself confused.
This should be Bethel Beverage.
That's Bethel Beverage, right there.
So where is that on here? Because that map's not this map.
Yeah, okay, so, why don't I, why don't I back up, because we have, we have kind of gone in a little bit disjointed, but let me see if I can put some clarity to it. So, I, for the, for the record, and for, I guess we're televised now, that's a big thing, and that's the recorder. You know, I was announced before, but Rick Dutton with Mainland Development Consultants, uh, representing Dominator LLC, that's Dominic Huliers. He's done a lot of the development along that, that stretch. Was involved with, I think, Portona and, and some of the other ones. So... I got two, here's the original, the original subdivision. I got two, here's the original, the original subdivision and site plan that was approved back in two thousand and six.
Could you pull that whole thing up here?
For the old people's house.
Yeah, it's not lights, even the TV can see it anymore. Okay, yeah, that's, okay, good, I got it.
Did you look at the building?
Yeah, that one with the coconut.
Norm's house?
This is storage.
Where the storage is.
Yeah.
All right, so, I'm sorry, can we, can we clarify which is which now? So can we start along, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this here.
Very dear viewer.
Seventy, seventy, which is seven acres, is what?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy, which is seven point zero.
Oh, Norm Clayton's.
That's the, that's Norm, that's Norm's house, that's the big, uh, the big.
And seventy-two dash two is the Bethel Beverage and the Glass Art Shop or whatever.
Are you looking at tax map?
What are you looking at?
Looking at something to provide it on the.
Section two.
Oh, go to, go to, go to this, go to that flat, that's, that's.
The previous. So we, yeah, we have a subdivision, a previous subdivision plan as a way of explanation of how we got here, and then a new plan or an amended plan, and I'll, I'll go over why that's critical in a second, um, that's the second plan.
Okay, so.
So this, this was approved by the board on the site plan and subdivision uh back in two thousand and six, and um I had seen the letter, in the, the cover letter to, to you folks, I think we had said, I'm not really sure why this is subdivision, because this was conveyed to the butter, so that's an example of conveyance, uh, we thought more about it since, and I'm, I'm pretty sure we've got one dwelling, two dwelling, or potentially, this is unit one A, one B, one C, one D, if this was planned to be residential, then, then these number of dwellings or buildings would eventually tally up to subdivision, so subdivision can be lots or buildings and dwellings.
Right, right.
So I suspect that's what triggered at the time, um, so we have basically a, a two-lot subdivision, uh, where this was defined at the time, this was planned to, two units on this lot, one, lot two is what we're dealing with, so we're taking lot two.
But again, you have to be clear where Bethel Beverage is.
So Bethel Beverage is currently on lot two.
Okay.
On, on old, old lot two.
Okay.
No, 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 cause plant never owned that piece, that was, that was, that was, um, because where it says, so, so see where it says existing building on lot one?
This is point one.
That one, that's the original garage, which is held at that. That's the garage that, that um Bob, what's his name, across the street. Carter's Garage is the existing building on lot one, lot two is the.
That's where um.
Is the Bethel Storage, Norm's House is the big cathedral, is the, is the colonial right after that, huh? Well, it's now Paul's, but it was Norm's.
Yeah.
The existing house that's on the land conveyed to butter is, is their, their haven, whatever.
Yeah, and on lot one, where there's two buildings, there's only one building, and that's old Carter's Garage.
The proposed building was never built.
We've got multiple maps that are different here, you've got this.
He's gonna clear, he's gonna try to clarify for us.
You've got the cannabis place here, you've got.
No, no.
It's right where it's existing.
Buffalo Beverage is a cannabis place.
Yeah, but that's, right, but that's where the daycare, oh, the new cannabis place, that's right, it's in the crossing.
It's in the exist, it's under existing.
Oh, because it used to be.
Why don't we wanna do a privateation and then we can.
I know. Everybody's, all right, I don't know why it's so confusing.
Well, so it's, it's not unreasonable to wanna get oriented to what are the buildings there, how does the office get, so I, that makes sense.
I don't, I don't like.
Let me, I brought up Google, oh, come on, of course it's gonna, gonna take it down, uh, take the, turn it off here, um, tech is awesome, so it's not.
You're right, bud.
I just don't know how to take.
Do you want me to do it? Swipe it down.
You're right, nap is.
Do you need help?
Nap is here, right?
Nap is down.
It's on the high nine.
Right there is.
Oh, I don't know, well, I think you just swipe it down, and then I should say like, no, that is.
Where's nap?
It's in, it's in that lot.
It doesn't, it's like a.
It's in that area, somewhere, yes, no, this is, this, this building here is where the, the, um, the, yeah, in the, in the pawn store, and then the Napa building is over in one area.
Okay, yeah, 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 and there we go, and there's, okay, so let's.
You wanna see it from this side?
Well, I just wanna have that we're, we're all discussing the exact same thing, I mean, I know where we are oriented, so this is not like this at all, this is the Napa, this is where the two, the Bethel Beverage and the Glass Shop are located.
That's there, that's not there.
So the Napa's over here.
No.
Yes.
Napper, Nappers.
And this is where those other shops are, right here.
Oh, okay, all right, yes.
So this is all just divided.
This, this is already, this is already divided here.
This is Sportoma and the Napa and then the other shops there.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, 'cause that, that, that picks, that the fiction that's in the packet there isn't right.
Okay.
Now, I think this been divided and changed, other things have been in different versions.
Yeah, this, this is lot one.
Yes, that's the Bethel Beverage and that is, that is this Sportoma, this is where the new Napa is in here.
Where that fits on the, to these lots.
Yeah, so tell us what, yeah.
This lot right here is now the, is the new storage, that's on the, that uses this.
Someone else approved that, right, that storage.
Okay, yeah, take that back, yes, two was.
No, we did that.
You wasn't here.
Can't have another talent.
See what happens when you're around him.
Other visual things, and we put a storage.
Well, they have no control over use.
We have no zoning.
No, okay, so.
Yeah, that's how we thought.
It's a good looking.
The last thing we need in the world is another storage area.
So how they built them, and then they fill up, and you think, where does all this stuff come from?
Yeah.
All right, so we're making progress, is that what's where?
Okay, so I think we're making progress, I misspoke, um, lot, lot two is storage, lot one is what we're talking about splitting again into smaller lots, so lot one was originally two point.
This is.
Uh, six, three, I think, two point six, three eight or something like that, uh, Bethel Beverage is currently there, and what he'd like to do is split it in half and, and have this saleable as another, another lot.
It is clear right now, it's been mowed, yes, yes, so I wanted to.
But he did have, in site plan, he did put another building in there that he never built.
Next to Bethel Beverage, yeah, in site plan, I don't know if I've seen that still.
It's old, really old.
Yeah, okay, so maybe it was planned, but now he's trying to.
Never happened.
Put the division between.
Yeah.
So I think the, the scheme varies sometimes between do I, do I build a path and lease it, uh, in which case I, you know, I keep the lot as one, it's my lot, and then, and then you're, you know, the, the person, the business comes in and leases lot, or do you market this as a, a lot for purchase, um, where someone's gonna come in and, and do their own commercial thing on that lot.
And Sportoma is the one right next to it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So he says existing pounds, that was what's Sportoma.
No, that house was originally.
How much acreage, so it'd be another two point six, or the whole thing is two point six.
So we're looking at splitting into one point three six to go with Bethel Beverage, and then one point two seven.
Okay, just to throw another clinch of this, there are two condominiums, they were, and they were for sale uh many years ago on top of Bethel Beverage, I'm not sure if they ever sold or if he just rents them, what, do you know this?
What does that have to do with?
Ownership.
Well, subdivision is affected by member of United States.
So this is already subdivision, um, so I, I'm with you, I'm thinking through what areas that have.
Standing, cause then they own.
I can go check the tax records, but I think we only bill.
Dominic?
I believe so, I can go follow that.
They were intended to be condominiums for sale, I remember we had them for sale, but I don't remember if we ever sold them, and if he just decided to rent them.
So they would have to be condominium docks.
It would have to be docks, they would also have to be at least eighty percent of the association to vote on this and get this through before this could ever happen.
If, if the entire land area was part of that.
Right, and that was supposed to be more, in the next building, more condominiums and more retail, same as a duplicate, so I don't know whatever came of that.
I don't know that those were sold, did they, I showed them a couple times, yes.
Our surveyors did their research in and out from, from, you know, with Dominic as the grantee-grantor rate chain of title, um, though it's not, it's not like title insurance, but um they, I presume that they would've come across the, the locking up of that lot in condominium docks, it would've shown up as, as recorded, at least for that, um, and so what, what's been presented here by, by our survey team is that this is a, one whole lot owned by, owned by Dominic, um, my presumption then is that uh Bethel Beverage has to, has to lease that from, from Dominic currently, and then we've got a deed in the packet that shows he, he owns the, the lot, so that's, that's, you know, should be his, his standing.
So the other thing, that, and I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure I'm correct on this, that was originally signed, and looking at the stuff, that was originally signed, most, when that near duplicate was proposed, it was one entrance, and it was permitted for one entrance.
To the whole lot?
The whole lot, and then I would, I got a hard time dealing with another entrance in an area that was already getting extensive amount of problems.
Yeah, but Beverage Place shares an entrance, but it would sell storage.
Now.
Now, I mean, we accomplished something positive there.
We accomplished something positive there, that entrance was taken out years ago and to be, as that mirrored duplicated that other building, was supposed to use the same entrance, and I think if, if this was to go through, that should stay as using the same entrance.
I'm gonna text somebody.
Did you learn anything?
For more problems.
Uh, only one person has filled out taxes for that.
I don't know if those ever got sold, she said only one person has filled out taxes.
Well, that doesn't mean anything.
No, it would mean something, yes.
They would pay their taxes.
Well, yes, if.
They would be in record.
If it was done right, yes.
They would be in record as a separate property owner, so it looks like it is just rentals.
I believe they.
I think.
They ended up staying as rentals.
So let's assume that that's the case for the time being, so we can move forward, um.
This was originally approved, approved as a subdivision on the state plan.
Okay.
I can't, I mean, I haven't found anything.
So that, that's what we piece together, is that if, if this is gonna move forward, and even though it's a split in one lot, in a lot that's existed for over five years, which normally you, you know, you have your reset, but if it's part of the original subdivision plan, that's forever a none, coming back to you folks as an amendment.
Yeah.
And so that's, that was the, the, uh, the frame of reference for, you know, everything in the application is, we're assuming, uh, we're not, we're not, it was part of a, an original subdivision plan, and now needs to be amended if it's gonna move forward.
Okay.
So then, um, we then prepared the package uh with an eye toward what do you, what do you need for, for submittals, and what thing, what submittals are superfluous based on, on the fact that it's already been part of the subdivision, uh, so for example, like the letters to hyphen W and M H P C and all that kinda stuff is, you know, it's, that's been, been there and done that kinda thing, and it's part of a, you know, a, a strip there that's.
So are you asking for a waiver on this, part of the application process?
Um, I, I wasn't planning on asking for a formal waiver, other than I, I think that probably you could take the, the historical information into account and, and check that particular standard as like.
A formal request to do that, if that's what you're asking of us, um, it could be made verbally, but it doesn't, we need to have a formal request on, you're asking us to say, please don't ask me to redo this part of the application process, and we have the ability to waive application standards.
Or, or if you think it's, it's N A, because it's already been reviewed by those agencies back in the original subdivision, that's up to you, if you think that, that it's, it should be a waiver of it.
Well, when we do a modification of subdivision.
I mean, if you all refer to one fifty dash nine at the right-hand bottom, it says amendments to first plans, and it tells you in there what, you can't be open.
Nine, so you're at eight.
One fifty dash nine.
Oh, okay, sorry.
One fifty dash nine or one fifty colon?
Well, yeah, so it's one fifty dash seven.
Yeah, and seven.
That's weird.
It does say we can determine substantial changes to the current annual term of application.
Which, we're looking. I see.
Fifty percent.
The what's that?
Um, it's on page one fifty dash, one fifty ten.
Right up here is what we're reading right now.
Relocation of roads or change in lot size by fifty percent.
So, yeah, it says relocation of a road or a change in a lot by fifty percent.
That's fifty percent.
Substantial changes would include.
So are we.
So what you're trying to determine, whether they need to come before the board for the.
Full application.
For the application. And according to this, is, if it's over fifty percent difference, then yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's, it's an amendment either way, but it would be, do you require the, this, all of the submittals that would come with a new application?
It's an amendment, which is substantial changes would include changes such as relocation of roads or changes in lot size by fifty percent, or changes in overall drainage, uh, changes drainage, it's, changes lot size.
But then it reads C, if it's determined that substantial changes are proposed, they need to submit which plans?
Which they have done, you're just asking for a waiver of certain submissions to the state around uh the.
I'm not even sure if I'm asking for that waiver, I was, I was explaining why um there, there's fewer submittals in this package than might be in a brand-new raw, raw license.
Okay, but I mean, if you are asking not to have to do something, then you, in the app, in the normal materials we've received, you have to request it, ask us to make a waiver of that standard.
If you feel that that's the case, yes.
And you're also proposing a new curva.
And it's this, if, if you go to section five, go to the last page, it talks about, um, there's an existing page acrean leading onto the proposed lot seventy-two one dash, uh, seventy-two dash one B, and but it says that the uh, the curva has since been installed.
Yeah.
Now, was there a right-of-way in there from the M D O T?
D O T owns to the, to the property line, and so they, they curved across uh this entrance right here, so there was an entrance, there was an entrance into that side of the, of the original lot then? Yes.
Originally, and now they've curved over, is what you're saying.
So they just. Do they, they curved over, they closed it off?
The aspect of, now, the other question is, did they ever get a, a, did that go, what do you wanna call it, did they get permission to put a driveway in there?
Uh, driveway entrance, Brian?
Yeah, at, at the, on the original lot.
So what, what we've done on this is, is tackled. So what, what we've done on this is, is tackled it in a couple different directions. Because obviously, if you guys approve subdividing this lot in institute two, then we have to be able to prove that there's viable access to the lot. So we, we've submitted an entrance permanent application to DOT pending. And I think probably because it doesn't need their normal standards for, for spacing, I think it's going to follow the process of waivers if it's granted. If it's not, then this, this lot would have to share entrance with.
Yeah, but that's not my question. My question is, when that original subdivision went in, it seems like by reading your statement here, that there were two accesses granted.
On that one.
On that one piece of property by the state, because you have the one that's existing there now, that's just being used. And according to that paragraph that you have in here, there was another one, but it's been, it's been, they put the curb down through it. Is that right?
Yeah, were there two or one?
Yes, so my question is, were two. Was there two there or not? Then it, do you still have the paperwork for that? If they, if you have two, then it's granted already.
But if the state closed it, it's closed.
So the reason that was closed, there was, back in the day when Carter had his garage, that was a loop driveway. There was two entrances into that. The state did close that off as an entrance.
Is there paperwork to prove that?
We can ask the state.
That I can't tell you, but I can tell you that that was a loop driveway and it did get shut off by the state.
Yeah, but you, you don't know, without paperwork, you don't know what the reason was.
No, I don't. And, but I do know that.
It could have been that they just, when they put the new road down through there, put the curb down through there and they.
You don't do that without.
Yeah, they do.
I do, I do remember.
Driveway over there at, at the auto station one time, I had to go after them, move it.
I do remember that when there was a lot of talk when that was being proposed, that it was supposed to be a shared driveway, uh, one entrance going to both units.
Yeah, and that's, and honestly, I don't, I can't speak for the board. It would be my pleasure that there would be still one entrance for both buildings, because this was done eighteen years ago and we were concerned about traffic and that if, we have much larger concerns about traffic now.
If that's the case, you would want to move it. You would want to move it to the.
It might need to be relocated, yes.
Relocated.
But the problem is, it's now shared with the self-storage. So we've got some very specific limitations. They might have to have the entrance into that lot go around the back, use the same shared thing and go.
For some reason, they couldn't.
Rick, how, yeah, how would that work? Is that?
So right now, we don't have the specifics of what wants to be developed there. So it's, we're not, we're not in a site plan review where we get to have all the details where we say, well, it's clearly, they're going to go up behind the building and then come in in this way. And right now, it's just, is there a way to access this lot so that it can be divided and then sold as a, as a buildable lot? And what else would you use that?
Sure.
When, when, for your, for the DOT entrance application that we made, we did not stick with this entrance location. So it was curved over, we said that's probably dead, and it probably makes more sense to be set over for, for spacing wise between these three. If they were to approve it, we assume it would be on this side of the lot. And we're, we're waiting to hear, that can be something that, that you can weigh in as a board and say, we really only want one entrance. Or DOT is okay with it, then I guess, then that, you know, that, that must be okay. But that's, those are the two scenarios that I would see taking place. Either they access from here and have some, some access across this lot, which would be granted. And that's part of this subdivision plan as a note eleven. And I'll, I'll just read it for you. The old driveway on lot one B is shown, appears to have been discontinued. Lot one B will have an access easement through the existing entrance on lot one A and along the deep parking in front of the existing building on one A to the southerly side of lot one B. Said easement will terminate when and if a DOT entrance, approved entrance is permitted and installed on lot one B. So basically, there's, there's a descriptive easement on this plan as a provision for, yes, DOT entrance is allowed or no, it's not. But that, that new location wouldn't be here in either, neither, what we've applied for is an, is an entrance.
When do you expect DOT to weigh into this?
I think probably pretty soon. They're, they're, they're pretty reactive.
So, I mean, I, for me, I can't make any further decisions about this till we understand how DOT is considering this in light of all the traffic on route two. These, you know, successive curb cuts are a real issue in that area. And I would not be comfortable taking any action on this application until we have formal correspondence from MDOT.
I, I, I feel the same way. I think it's too overriding MDOT is, is a really big deal for us. If we do that, so it would be kind of banging our heads against the wall on this one with, with MDOT. I think, I, I'm concerned about two cur, an extra curb cut. Does, how does everybody else feel about this?
Have we ever approved things without MDOT approval when it's retail before?
But there's no.
Well, we don't know what this lot.
It's a problem. And that problem, proposed use can be intensive, it could be not intensive.
Right. Yeah, that's why you would have to come back in front of the board.
And it may be that MDOT without a use is not going to approve a commercial lot entryway without.
They've got, they've got an application right here.
I know, but I don't think MDOT is going to approve it without a use.
Theoretically, you've got states over there where the entrance, where you want the entrance, is that correct?
Yep.
So you want the entrance to the, to the right, right?
But I don't understand how DOT can make a decision, because you go to higher levels of review if there, if the use has certain trips per day and that kind of thing.
Exactly right. We'd have to come back to DOT, just like we'd have to come back to the board in more detail. They would have to go back to DOT with, with an amendment to that entrance permit to say, all right, we're generating X number of trips per day. And, and what does that mean for, for this?
So I mean, till MDOT weighs into this, I don't think we should act on this. I agree.
I would like to inject a couple of things. One, spending a bunch of time at, at PT Boys.
Saco Bay.
Saco Bay. And listening to them say how many times they get their tires screeching from people trying to stop. I think that plays a big part. The other thing is looking at the original stuff on the, on the conditions and the notes from the original subdivision. And, and maybe this is going to play a part in things, but number three, the first floor retail space are not part of the subdivision. And any residential, residential occupa, well, it's paid tonight. Occupation is strictly prohibited without approval from the board. I had this all read, now I'm reading again, now I'm changing my mind. Permanent reference, the subdivision plan shall be filed, that's not what he's holding. Word I lost it. I can't find it out. Oh. May, see main department transportation driveway entrance permit for this project dated May thirtieth oh six, permit number forty-five oh four. Do we have that?
When is it dated? You can continue while I look for it.
May thirtieth oh six and it's number forty-five oh four. And then each building of lot one shown is a sixty by fifty, non-including decks, consisting ground level floor retail and two three-bedroom residential condominium units designated A, B, C, and D. That's what was approved.
So an identical building to what's there?
Yes.
But how could MDOT give a permit to just, or maybe they do, just to a empty lot?
Well, that, it wasn't. This was supposed to be one lot.
But I mean, in the, for, for the new one.
I can't see how.
How can they do that? What if it's a Roman Joe's? You know, it's.
Yeah, it would be a generic, a generic entrance.
They do do that?
Yeah.
On which?
And then, once you have your traffic data, you know, if it was a single-family residence, you would come in and say, hey, I want to, I want to deal with a single-family residence on this, on this entrance. And then say, okay, thumbs up or thumbs down.
Right.
If you wanted to do a Roman Joe's there and you're generating, you know, more than a hundred trips per day, then you're at the traffic movement permit, they're going to review all the things. And they might say, no, you can't, you can't use that entrance for that.
Fire beware, get your permits before you complete your purchase and sale, is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, depending on your use, right? Like your, your traffic use, your traffic generation.
I think I'd be more con, I, I, I think, I'd like to see a motion to table this until that permit is.
Where I was.
Yes, I have the original permit.
I'll make a motion to. Before we do that, the good one.
Well, I will say that in the original subdivision, it was approved that, um, that lot two was an unimproved lot. So I don't know if that second building actually ever.
No, lot, lot two is, lot two is where.
Storage is, I know.
Oh, okay, all right.
Where this is all lot one.
Okay, so Mitch has a.
So what do you want to know about this?
Do they say in there that they discontinued the?
It wouldn't.
Well, they discontinued it after approval.
So it won't say it in there?
So this would have been approved in two thousand and six. When did they redo the road?
No, but DOT would have, I'm not saying they would have, would they have said, this is going to be, lot one is going to be one entrance, not two?
Well, that's what we'll figure out when they deal with this application.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if, if it says that in DOT permit.
Well, they have to go back to DOT and find out.
They have to go back.
She's got it right there.
No, that's, that, that's the original one where it established the entrances.
As one lot.
Right. So now you're looking forward to find out if they disestablished the entrances and when they built the new road.
And what, with a subdivision, what would they allow for entrance?
Well, they did, they did. They discontinued it on this, on the, on the oh six. It shows approved driveway, grass strip, grass strip, grass strip, all the way across.
Okay.
He's got to go back to DOT and find out.
But aside from that, I fully agree.
What was this parcel in the original?
Okay.
So Mitch has made a motion.
No, second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling this?
Is there discussion on that?
Yes. Is there a discussion? Is there any discussion?
No.
I thought we'd be discussing it.
Is it, is it welcome from me?
Yeah.
Okay. It sounds like, like most of the board is concerned with the entrance and that traffic. Would it be reasonable for you folks to have a finding that you just don't, don't want a second entrance? And there, there's provision on this plan essentially for.
I know, you were talking about an easement.
Yeah. And so, you know, we could basically abandon the DOT effort if, there are two separate entities. There's DOT and then there's you folks. DOT could approve an entrance, you could feel differently than DOT and you can, you can make your own decision on, is this an appropriate entrance or not? If you're feeling like it's not, then it may be a requirement of the board that shares the entrance with Bethel Beverage. Whoops, on, on the other plan.
What I don't understand in all of this, it's like, I don't know, pick a cliche, the horse is out of the barn or the cat's out of the bag or whatever. But what, if, if this indeed, this is the storage slightly thing, God only knows what, but anyway. And this is the shared driveway for that. What I don't understand is if this was a split lot, why did this get its own driveway?
It wasn't a split lot at the time.
It wasn't.
It was all, it was all one lot, yeah.
The, the split lot for Bethel Beverage and the glass, whatever that other shop is, should be, and this lot should be in here for the two of them. And they should have their own things.
I know what we were trying.
But you can't tell them that after the fact, right?
No, because we had no idea that they were looking to subdivide this lot when we dealt with the storage. It was not on the table.
So it would simply be three buildings now sharing that entrance.
Which is what it should.
But I don't know how, how, I don't understand how you possibly could do that, because if these people.
You'd have a deed right of way across that axis. If, if this was, if this was proved, we'll call it one B to the right. You would have entrance existing in.
Here, and they're going to drive across this driveway to get to whatever's going to go over there.
And that to me is a matter.
And we don't know what's going to be over there. We have no clue.
But, but if you've ever been in the Bethel Beverage thing, that space that's in front of the building with parking and other kinds of things, that's not good.
There's also plenty of room to go around that.
You guys, the, the fish truck.
Yes.
I use that fish truck. And, and the fish truck's all the time standing there, so what's it going to have with the fish truck? But we have no clue what's going to go in here. Am I right?
Right.
I mean, somebody potentially could buy it and never go all good.
So there's not enough information.
So we've, we've got a motion.
You've got a motion on the hall.
Can I ask one, can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
What if DOT comes back and says we can have another driveway? Would, would the board say, no, we don't want that?
We can override them. We have our own safety, we have our own traffic safety standard. We don't do it often, but.
Uh, we don't like it. But I do feel, I, I, I actually feel two things. I feel like I'd like to act on this, on this, I'd like to act on this motion and I'd like to see one entrance for the, for the whole, but I think I'd like to do a sidewalk. Cause I'm, I, I know this property all so well, but on the other hand, all of a sudden.
I haven't looked at it.
I was thinking of it, right, exactly.
Well, we need to see where they would like, if there is a new entrance, exactly where it is and how it flows in. Rather than, yeah, I mean, no matter how well we know it, unless they show us the markings and kind of.
We have to know what happens.
And it's all heavily dependent upon what would be in that space. I mean, that makes a huge difference. But I think we're, I agree with the motion to table, we should vote on that. But one final thing is that we're all in agreement, and I'm not a traffic engineer or anything else, but I do think that they might, I, I, we're all agreeing, but I certainly agree myself and believe that we should minimize the numbers of driveways on and off route two for public safety issues.
Rick, are you ever here on the weekends in that?
Yeah.
It's terrible. It is. Now we are getting traffic back debt from Sunday River to El Star.
We burn Saturday after a big snowstorm.
Yeah.
It's, it's not.
Backdoor traffic is not so bad as, as heavy flowing and then people coming in and out.
You turn, you turn around and take a four o'clock on a Sunday afternoon, Saturday afternoon, they're trying to come down through there. And you throw the tractor trailers in, you throw everything else in.
All right, so we voted on the table?
No, we didn't. Okay, but I, I have another question. Is there any way that we can, if we, we're talking about tabling it, but then have a sidewalk and that would give you time to get the MDOT permit in?
Potentially, yeah.
I mean, is there, I quite need your help with this.
For sure. Why would we be doing this sidewalk if we have no clue what would be going in here? We all kind of, we know this. I mean, what's the sidewalk going to tell us?
I've never.
Okay, let's table it. Well, okay, no, let's vote on tabling it. Everyone, are we done with discussion? Oh, no, Rick wants to discuss some more.
I'm going to push, I'm going to push everyone's patience. Instead of tabling, we know we have an issue on, on traffic, would it be possible to go through the rest of what's been submitted and look at, do we have, like, do they like to submit all of it?
I want to leave the question. Nope, so let's, let's move to the question.
Okay, so no, no further feedback until traffic is sorted out.
Yeah.
Unless your applicant wants to make his own decision about access. In other words, I'm not going to wait for the planning board to tell me I can only have one. I'm going to ask my consultants to propose a plan with one. That's an option for you as well. So.
Well, again, if the board wants to require that, he's certainly ready to and have to make provision for it even on this plan.
I don't like these going in front like.
Yeah. I think that, we need to think more about it. So we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of tabling.
We vote, this is the second time we hadn't raised our hands in the top of the class.
Did we do that? Rick, I'm so sorry. It sounded chaotic, didn't it? Right from the start.
Yes, we couldn't figure out what we were looking at.
I know, and we were.
So with the, the tabling.
Wait for you to come back with a re-formatted plan. Wait for you to come back with a re-formatted plan or, and, and, and M D O T's letter.
Okay.
Right.
We wanna know what they would do if they got a request, and we also wanna know whether you wanna propose something different.
Well, not only that, but he'll, he'll find out if that other curb cut is, is valid in a lot of them. It could be you already have a curb cut there and can use it, it could be that.
Or it could be they moved it, they could've said, okay.
So you need to do that research at D O T.
Yeah, so.
It could also be that the board just doesn't wanna entertain a D O T entrance either, either way.
I mean, I think. Well, if there's a legal one in existence, it's gonna be a problem associated with the, that's Bob's point, associated with the previous subdivision, so you gotta do that research.
Sure.
And bring all that information.
And then, uh, sidewalk would then, are you still thinking about sidewalk, and would you wanna do that?
Well, I think depending on what you're proposing, if you're proposing, you come back to us and propose a different entry model, we would wanna take a look at that probably on the ground.
Okay, that might be decided at, at a hall of meaning, whether this is.
Yeah.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a motion that we return to the agenda?
Yes.
Do we have that motion? We shouldn't, I should, you should just say, Madam Chairman, can you do your job?
Thank you all.
Sorry, Rick, thank you, I'm sure we'll see you. Okay, any old business? Um, other business?
So we have a meeting on October twenty-second, you know that?
Yeah.
Twenty-third. Oh, seriously, I can't read without my glasses.
Here, I have the specs for that.
So that's where we should be aiming for.
Yeah.
Here's your.
Okay, so I, you two can find out who wants to do.
Make a motion over here.
Wait, wait, please. Can we look, can we look at, um, acting November twenty-seventh?
We have a secret discussion right now.
Oh.
So, our second meeting in November is the night before Thanksgiving.
That's what I just said, I'm trying to.
Yeah, we usually don't do it.
We can do the twenty-sixth.
I won't be here.
Is there gonna be business? Do we know?
Doesn't matter, no.
We have to live, we have to get four, so, um. So could I get a, would someone like to make a motion to cancel?
I would like to make a motion, we cancel the November twenty-seventh meeting.
I've got a second, all in favor. Okay.
We need to vote on our agenda.
You don't have to vote to adjourn.
Oh, we know.
We don't.
Would you like to cancel December twenty-third?
The chair declares.
The Christmas one, ultimately?
I was gonna say, what is the next one then, after November thirteen?
Christmas.
What would be the next?
Oh, the next, the next one after the, would be December eleven.
December eleven?
And then I would like to propose we cancel the December twenty-fifth.
But we're not, we don't have one.
Twenty-third.
It's not on the agenda yet.
Wednesday.
We can have a Christmas party here.
Oh, on Christmas.
We could do that, but December. I'm just saving it now.
I'm sorry.
We don't have, yeah.
We make a motion?
I do, okay, new rules, meeting is adjourned. We've been voting on that all this time.
The chair just did.